And the rights of the chair. According to bylaw section 11.9, address the right of the rights of the chair to vote. The chair may vote with the other members of the board upon all motions, and any motion on which there isn't equal votes is lost. Roberts Rules of Order states that the chair is a member of the voting body, and has exactly the same rights and privileges as other members, including the rights to make motions, the rights to speak in debate, and the right to vote. However, impartiality requires the presiding officer to take motions or speak in debate while presiding, and requires refraining from voting except in two conditions: the first one, when the vote is by ballot, or by secret ballot, or when the chair's vote will affect the actual result. In light of this, I want to make it clear from the outset that it is my intention as a chair to refrain from voting on all matters unless it's absolutely necessary. With that being said, let us begin the meeting. I'm going to call upon student trustee William Charabah to lead us in opening prayer, national anthem, and oath of citizenship.
Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. A reading from the letter of Paul to the Ephesians. I beg you to lead a life worthy of the calling to which you have been called, with all humanity and gentleness, with patience, bearing with one another in love, making every effort to maintain the unity of the spirit in the bond of peace. There is one body and one spirit, just as you were called to the one hope of your calling, the one Lord, one faith, one baptism, one God, and Father of all, who is above all and through all and in all. One of the discoveries we make in prayer is that the closer we come to God, the closer we come to all our brothers and sisters in the human family. God is not a private God. The God who dwells in our inner sanctuary is also the God who dwells in the inner sanctuary of each human being. As we recognize God's presence in our hearts, we can also recognize the presence in the hearts of others, because the God who has chosen us as a dwelling place gives us the eyes to see the God who dwells in others. Lord Jesus, teach us by your Spirit to see our brothers and sisters as you see them. Allow us to put aside our differences so to pursue our calling of serving others. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
There was no motion to adopt it in camera. Information to receive in camera. I will now ask Vice Chair Murphy to read, allow the information received in camera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The following information was received in camera. Retirements. Melissa Burrell, Burrella, sorry, retiring effective December 31, 2018. Vice principal appointments. John Guzzo appointed as acting elementary principal effective November 26, 2018 to December 21, 2018. Suzanne Rosini appointed as acting elementary vice principal effective December 3 to 21st, 2018. Nick Lorata appointed as acting vice principal effective December 3, 2018. Kelly Williams appointed as acting elementary principal effective January 7, 2019. Donna Owens, Christine Spotswood, and Elise Carey appointed as elementary vice principals effective January 7, 2019. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I will ask a mover and a second there, please. Trustee Duarte. Trustee Agnew. Took an extra step there.
I wanted to make a notice of motion.
Yes, go ahead.
So it would be called Extended French at St. Matthew's?
Thank you. Any other motions? Okay. All in favor? Motion ca-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
No. All against?
We're going to vote on the agenda as amended.
Agenda as amended. You move it. Second it. All in favor? Motion fails. Amendments to the agenda fails.
Just a point of order. Wouldn't we put it on as an information item, and then it gets voted on in next board meetings?
Looking at that. So the item becomes an information item and goes to the next board meeting. Trustee Guzzo?
I also have a notice of motion for information for the next meeting. It's in regards to the AP transportation and reviewing of the motion that was passed at the last board meeting.
Can I have a motion to amend the agenda? Trustee Duarte. Second it. Item number three, declaration of conflict of interest. Presentations. Tonight we have in Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Contest finalists and their families. I will ask Andrea Swedden, our manager of communications, to introduce the presentation.
We are excited to present to you this year's finalists for the Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Contest. Today we are here to honor the 16 student finalists of this year's contest, and as you can see, these students have brought along family and friends. Everyone here to support them and justifiably proud as they should be. We had more than 400 entries, and these were the 16 finalists that were selected, and they were the ones that were presented for the online vote. So just to give you a little bit of background on this contest, we started this contest in 2013. At the time, we had just developed our social media strategy, and we were launching Twitter and Facebook and YouTube, and we were looking for a way to draw our students and our staff and our parents to our social media platforms. At the same time, our former director of education, Paula Dawson, was looking for a piece of student artwork to feature in her Christmas card. So what we did was we decided to launch a student art contest that would achieve all of these things. We realized that we could not do this alone, so we actually reached out to our Halton Elementary and Secondary OACTA associations, and I have to say that they have been instrumental all of these years in supporting this contest. We absolutely could not have done it without their generous donations of the prizes that we will be handing out tonight to our students. So that first year, just to go back a little bit, just for that first year, I'll do this quickly, we have a lot of students that are antsy, but what we did was we invited students, both elementary and secondary, to submit artwork. Basically, all we said was we kept it really open, just described the theme of what Keeping Christ in Christmas means to you. We didn't quite know what to expect in terms of submissions, but we were pleasantly surprised. The response was overwhelming, and needless to say, it's become an annual tradition here at HCDSB. And over the years, we've adjusted certain elements of the contest. So as you can see, in 2015, we introduced song and video as submission categories in addition to artwork. And then in 2017, we changed the judging categories from just simply elementary and secondary to, we broke it down to K to 3, grades 4 to 6, grades 7 and 8, and grades 9 to 12, just to make things a little bit more, even the playing field a little bit for the students. This year, we introduced a new submission category, poem or short story, and it was actually a great response. We received over 50 submissions just for the poem or short story, and Amanda will get to that as we move on. So this year, we have, oh, actually, I should tell you that since 2013, we've had over 2,200 student submissions and over 18,000 online votes have been cast. So this year, we have a new director of education, Pat Daly, and he challenged us this year to take this contest to the next level. He wanted us to try to do something to promote the spirit of this contest. So we kind of brainstormed, and we came up with a solution that we thought we would just do on a smaller scale this year, and see how it went. We took limited samples of the artwork we had received, and we created cards, and you've probably seen this on social media, because it did kind of take off. Initially, we were trying to keep it small, so we only advertised it with our central office staff. And what we did was we sold the sets of cards for a donation that was used towards supporting a family for Christmas through the St. Vincent de Paul Society. So word got around, and we quickly ran out of cards, and thanks to our, you know, we had staff here at central office, we had a lot of principals support this initiative, and we also had parents and members of the parish calling and wanting card sets. So we ended up, we're frantically scrambling to print off more cards, and we're still selling, and so I can tell you that we've raised over $600 so far, and it's still, and we've already given them one installment, and we'll have to give St. Vincent de Paul another. But the good news in all of this is that a very, this is a very concrete way to keep Christ in Christmas this year for one family in Oakville. So that's what we did this year, entirely separate from what's going on tonight. I just wanted you to know that, and I think we're going to continue this next year, but you'll hear more about it. Tonight, we are here to recognize and celebrate the finalists of the Keeping Christ in Christmas Contest and reveal the four grand prize winners. I'm going to now ask Amanda Bartucci, our communications officer, to walk you through
So this year, the call for submissions went out on November 9, and entries were due by December 2. So we changed the format a little bit this year for allowing students who are a little more comfortable with other submission categories. So we offered four categories this year, not only traditional artwork, original song, original video, we also offered short stories and poems this year. So as Andrea mentioned a little bit, the response to this contest over the past few years has been outstanding, and just this year alone, we've received over 400 student submissions. So a little bit of background, on December 5, judging panel met to review all of the submissions. So the panel consisted of the chair of our board, Peter DeRosa, director of education, Pat Daly, assistant chaplaincy leader, Jillian Federico, and the president of the Halton OACTA Elementary Teachers Association, Nina March, her vice president, Tara Hambley, as well as the president of the Halton OACTA Secondary Teachers Association, Lorraine Beraldo Turner, and vice president, Sean Roberts. So student submissions were judged separately, and the judging panel did not receive any personal information about contestants, so they didn't know name, age, gender, school, et cetera, or any additional information that would influence their selection process. The judges reviewed all of the entries and narrowed down the submissions to 16 finalists. So there would be four K to 3 students, four students from grades 4 to 6, four students from grades 7 to 8, and then four secondary students in grades 9 to 12. So once we narrowed down the entries, they went to the online voting process. So the 16 finalists were showcased on our website, and the online voting process began, allowing students, parents, staff, and members of our community to make the final decision on the winner of the top prizes for our elementary and secondary divisions. So the voting process took place between December 7 and 14, which is around a week, and we received an outstanding number of participants in the online voting process. We received over 6,000 votes this year alone.
So now it's time to meet the finalists. And I will ask, if I could, I know you can't see me behind this monitor, but I would ask the chair of the board and the director of education, and also our assistant chaplaincy leader, Jillian Federico, to please come up inside the U, which is where we're going to be presenting our student finalists with their certificate and a gift. Okay, so our first student finalist in the kindergarten to grade 3 category is Sofia Brimo. She's in grade 3, and she attends St. Anthony of Padua Catholic Elementary School, and you can see on the screen, that is the artwork that she created. We also have it in hard copy at the table here. So if we could ask Sofia to please come up. Sofia Brimo. Congratulations, Sofia.
So next up, we have a painting submitted by Alicia Cavacamar, a kindergarten student who attends Queen of Heaven Catholic Elementary School. Congratulations, Alicia.
Next up, we have Anna Sofia. I'm going to slaughter your last name, I should have asked you how to pronounce it. Lothringen, I think. Lo-oh. I'm sorry. She's in grade 2, and she attends Sacred Heart of Jesus Catholic Elementary School, and Anna Sofia actually submitted a song, and she has agreed to come and sing it for us live tonight. So you can come up right now.
(Singing) What a baby could be, Christ is great, I should always, love and devotion for every year. Father, I'm so long, I'll keep him in my heart. What a baby could be, Christ is great, I should go to church every Sunday, pray to Him every day. Father, I'm so long, I'll keep him in my heart. Pray to Him every day. Father, I'm so long, I'll keep him in my heart. I'll keep him in my heart.
So also in our K to 3 group, we have a hand-drawn picture created by Maile Rabinski, a grade 3 student from Holy Rosary Catholic Elementary School in Milton. Congratulations, Maile.
So now we're moving on to grades 4 to 6, and our first student entry that was, became a finalist for 4 to 6 is Jacob Casemiro, and he's in grade 6 at Queen of Heaven Catholic Elementary School. Jacob actually also submitted a song, and he has agreed to sing it for us. Yeah, go on up. Congratulations, Jacob.
So in our newest edition of poems for this year, we have a submission by Alexa Cormier, a Grade 6 student from St. Bridget Catholic Elementary School. Alexa will be sharing her poem with us this evening. Congratulations. Congratulations, Alexa.
Okay, and next we have Kingsley Marshall. He's a Grade 4 student at St. Andrew Catholic Elementary School. And Kingsley submitted a very catchy tune and he is going to share it with us tonight. Congratulations, Kingsley.
So also in our Grades 4 to 6 group, we have a submission by Tanny Alabude, a Grade 4 student from St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School. Tanny will also be sharing his poem with us tonight. Congratulations, Tanny.
Now, we're on to Grades 7 to 8. And our first student entry here, finalist, is Cindy Boo and she's in Grade 8. She attends St. Benedict Catholic Elementary School. Cindy created this artwork that you see on the screen. It's also... maybe the director could pick it up because you have to see this, live. Yes, it's beautiful. So if we could ask Cindy to come up? Go up. You can go up. Go right up. Congratulations, Cindy.
And now, we have Sophia Fatique Garcia, a Grade 7 student from St. John Paul Catholic Elementary School, who remixed "Hark! The Herald Angels Sing" while playing the drums. We have a video of her performance to share with you tonight. Congratulations, Sophia.
We should add that Sophia was ready to bring her drum set with her tonight and we had to break it to her that we just didn't have enough room and she must believe us now, so... So next, we have Anna Marie Horvat. Anna Marie is a Grade 8 student at Ascension Catholic Elementary School. She's created this piece of artwork that the director will hold up. It actually is pretty impressive because it even lights up. I have no idea how she did that, but it's beautiful. See, some of these are difficult to tell. Even online, I don't think people could appreciate just how beautiful it is until you see it in person. So Anna Marie, do you want to come up? Congratulations, Anna Marie.
Also, in our Grades 7 to 8 group, we have a painting of the Nativity created by Zoe Leonard, a Grade 8 student from St. Vincent Catholic Elementary School.
Zoe's painting was actually one that we featured in the Christmas cards that we created to sell for donation, as you can see why. Congratulations, Zoe. And now, we're on to Secondary, Grades 9 to 12. We have Annie Alice John, who's in Grade 12 at John Vannier Catholic Secondary School. Annie created this artwork, which the director is going to hold up. This is another one of those that doesn't translate as well in the digital because it actually has stitching on it that you really can't even appreciate until... So not only did she paint it, but then she stitched it as well, so... Congratulations, Annie.
So also, in our Grades 9 to 12 group, we have a drawing by Frances Loza, a Grade 11 student from John Vannier Catholic Secondary School.
Congratulations, Frances. And now, we have Thomas Joseph Nasato, who is in Grade 12 at St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Secondary School. Thomas created a song. Come on up. It's actually called "Christmas Rap," W-R-A-P. And you will see the pun in a second. You will hear the pun in a second. Yes.
It's a human man, see you got all the fans, throwing all the jams, flexing all your fans. There's only one issue, I hope you think so too. It ain't your birthday, it's Jesus's day. So take a seat, let me break it down, take it to downtown. Seeking stealing Christmas is funny, so you make lots of money. But let me tell you something. Jesus is who we love with all the wise dove. Read the Bible, that's the title, over a thousand pages for all ages. Maybe learn a few things about the King Jesus. Boy, he's a genius, it's outrageous. He's the God guardian angels with expectations. Washed over all of us, hallelujah, Jesus. He prays you at every meal, Santa, how that make you feel? How that make you feel, Santa? Yeah. Santa Claus, let's put you on pause, we don't need your gifts. When we got Jesus on a special day, it's his birthday. Can I get a hooray? Hooray for your birthday. Jesus, it's your birthday, time to celebrate, time to celebrate on your birthday. Birthday, time to celebrate on your birthday. You the Messiah who we see desire. Joy of salvation on your day of creation. Saint Ovation, Jesus is the reason for the season. Dad from above, I'm the son, love him, us, time. Can't kill anyone, give him bless, waves off my chest, off my chest. How that... If you're not first, then you throw the worst. Santa Claus, let's put you on pause, we don't need your gifts. When we got Jesus on a special day, it's his birthday. Can I get a hooray? Hooray for your birthday. Jesus, it's your birthday, time to celebrate. Time to celebrate on your birthday. Birthday, on your birthday. Yeah.
Congratulations, Thomas. And last, but certainly not least, we do have a short story submission by Kavia Pyris, a grade 12 student from Notre Dame Catholic Secondary School. Kavia will also be presenting her story with us tonight.
Hi, everyone. There is nothing like Christmas for me that brings joy to my heart. It's a feeling that's healthy to find in words. I believe that love and humility are the greatest qualities that Christ has inherited in calculating people's hearts. He was a king of things, but he now steps forth to treat his people and sets example for others. Today, there are many conflicts in different parts of the world. People are now willing to be humble and forgive each other. So though he cannot change the whole world in one day, as mother treats the dead, we do our own little part in the journey. For many people, Christmas is this time to buy new clothes, gifts, etc., etc. I've been observing since I was nine years old. I've seen people attending Christmas mass who were wearing expensive, beautiful clothes that Christmas traditions. Matthew chapter 24 says, "Leave your gifts near the altar. First go and reconcile with your neighbor, then come and offer your gifts." Therefore, if we can forgive someone during the Christmas season, I think it will be more important to fix the wicked gifts which might be forgotten in a short time. We immigrated to Canada in 2008 from Sri Lanka due to the very dangerous political situation in our country. People are still undergoing hardships as a result. Every year during this time, I help my parents in collecting used toys from friends and chores and sending them to children in Sri Lanka who are under poverty. When I was looking for a part-time job, I tried to investigate a place where I could help elderly people in relation to my grandparents after I left Sri Lanka. Luckily, I found a job in a retirement home in Brooklyn where I worked four days per week. At the opportunity of learning about the difficulties and lonelinesses that people were experiencing at their old age, I am planning to organize a caring program here with the help of my friends. I'm sure that they will enjoy it. I believe that fixing a nativity scene, Christmas tree, flowers, a light bulb, walls in the garden, and writing certain stories, etc., help many people to ignore the spirit of Christmas, even though it's not directly related to the real message of Christmas. Our tradition is to gather all pieces of nature, see best family, and invite some people, especially those who are not fully aware of Christmas. It's a great feeling when they offer to stay in our little prayer and listen to Bible verses and spiritually and piously. I strongly believe that Christ will live with us and with us all throughout the year if we try to keep Christ and Christmas by engaging activities that will feed him, especially during the time when we celebrate his birthday. The true meaning of Christmas is selflessness, as Jesus preached the world using his own life. Spirit of Christmas can only be felt through love and generosity. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, Kavia.
Okay, finally, kids. It's time to announce the winners. They've been waiting very patiently. So if we could ask Nina March, the president of the Oacta Elementary Association, Tara Ham, the vice president of the Elementary Oacta Association, and Lorraine, as well, Beraldo Turner, the president of the Oacta Secondary Association, if they could all go up to the circle there, the U, and then we will let you do your thing because they have the envelopes with the information.
Well, hi, everyone. Do you want to start? No, we're going. After six years, things get easier because it does get easier. There are more submissions, more categories. And all of you and your fellow students are incredibly talented, incredibly engaged in this beautiful expression of our faith. And I have to tell you, this is my favorite board meeting of the entire year, every single year. So thank you for making that happen for me. I'd also like to thank our elementary teachers and our parents who support me and encourage our students throughout this process and who also foster your love of our faith. And I'd like to thank you again for this beautiful expression of faith that you've given to our community and that we engage in some participation. It really is a gift that you've given to all of us, and we are very honored to participate in it. So I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to partner with you. It's very special. So... Did I get right to it? I'll just say a few words. I'm also honored to be here. It was particularly exciting to see the live performances. Although I don't have a singing voice or a singing hand, I can really appreciate the time and the dedication it took to make all the beautiful things, to create and to sing everything that we did. It's so uplifting to see all that. And whenever I leave the board's office after judging, it's always... I float up here knowing that all of you, all of our students, really know the true meaning of Christmas. It's very encouraging. So I congratulate you all for being part of it. Okay. So the recipient of our primary kindergarten grade three category is Mayel Aginsky. Okay. Our junior category, Alexa Kornick. So congratulations to everyone here. You really truly have kept Christ in Christmas. And the winner of the intermediate seven and eight is Cindy Boo. Okay. The secondary grade nine to 12 winner, Frances Loza.
Thank you, Nina, Tara, and Lorraine. So we'd just like to thank all of the students who took part in our sixth annual Keeping Christ in Christmas contest. It's always so amazing to see the hard work and passion that is put into all of your submissions each and every year. We would also like to thank the Holton Oacta Elementary and Secondary Associations for sponsoring the contest through your generous donation and all the support that you've provided us throughout the years. We're also excited to announce that the student submissions will be featured on the board's website and YouTube channel over the next few days and during the Christmas break. So congratulations once again to all of you. You should feel very proud for all that you've accomplished here tonight. So students, if you could please follow me out to the foyer. We're going to just take some pictures. Thank you.
Everybody's in the room, there needs to be. We are now ready to begin with our delegations. I will remind delegates that you'll have 10 minutes to make your presentations. I will ask the director daily to help me keep track of the time. At the end of each delegation, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask questions for clarification purposes. I will now ask for our first delegation this evening to present on the topic of operational issues regarding French programming, Danielle Carroll and Sandra Duff.
Hi. This will clip through if you want to use the clicker.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for hearing our delegation. I'm Sandra Duff. Happy to present this to you alongside of Dan Carroll. Also wanted to welcome the new board of trustees. As a community, we've been very impressed with the community involvement and the impact that you campaigned on. So we're happy to have this here tonight. In terms of why we're here, we realized that there was a decision to relocate the extended French program from Saint Matthew. The decision was made without any engagement from the community at the school. And we're very concerned about the clear lack of transparency. There are some operational issues that have been cited with the program and its removal. But we've been unable to really get an understanding of what those operational issues are. And at the moment, removing the program results in about a 50% reduction of French programming within our community. So for today, we really want to outline our concerns and highlight the impact to our community. In terms of an outcome, what we'd really like to see is for this board of trustees to reconsider this decision and for us to look at the entire program together to really understand the root causes of what's causing this program removal. And what we would really like for you to consider is that we go back to the process that was...
Thank you, Sybil. And thank you, board, for listening to our concerns. So I just want to go into a very quick background of what has been happening for the last six months and some questions that arise from it. On June 5th, there was a regular board meeting that concluded and it published that there would be a program revision due in 2020-21, as is listed here in the quote. Later on, unrelated to that, on August 29th, the Ontario Human Rights Commission released a new policy and recommendations for accessible education. In September, we all had a great start to a new year. And then October 25th, the board announces the removal of the extended French program from St. Matthews School via an email to only grade four students and parents. Obviously, there were some concerns that arose out of this announcement, and we tabled a delegation, which we had a delegation with a previous board in early November. And this is really when there was, you know, some conversation around operational issues came to light that we were previously unaware of at all within the school. So we would really like to have the, be an open dialogue tonight to talk you through what we hope to see as the successful outcome.
Hi there, I'm Dan Carroll. I think it's pretty obvious that our position is that there's been a lack of transparency pertaining to drivers of operational issues at St. Matthew Catholic Elementary School. The information report supporting optional French programming, which was introduced as item 1012 during the October 16th board meeting and used to support Director Daly's decision to remove the program from St. Matthews, references capacity challenges at St. Matthews, but does not disclose the underlying drivers. Key drivers of operational issues still haven't been disclosed to the public, which we believe erodes trust, despite numerous community email communications to the board asking for clarity. Issues appear to be related to overcapacity and max capacity in portable usage at St. Matthews and underutilization of schools within Oakville and bordering Glen Abbe area. Board staff works on projections and facility utilization and is presumably in position to oversee and predict capacity challenges before they negatively impact communities. Yet, the board has continued to accept cross-boundary applications at St. Matthew Catholic School from 2013 through to 2018. So our critical questions are, why did the board continue to accept cross-boundary applications if capacity concerns were growing and the loss of extended French would be a long-term consequence for the community? Second, what are the issues with the home schools of cross-boundary exceptions? And why would the board permit said exceptions with capacity issues at St. Matthew Catholic School imminent? The 2018 Long Term Capital Plan was agreed to in principle with trustees in June of 2018. Clearly states that St. Matthew Catholic School would be subject to a program review in the years 2020-21, inclusive of key stakeholder engagement. What monumental changes occurred between June and October to warrant the surprising loss of that programming at St. Matthews and subsequently in the Glen Abbe area? As for our community impact, we feel the full story is unclear. Access to the extended French program in the Glen Abbe area has been reduced by fifty percent. Furthermore, the interest in program participation may not truly be represented in the current enrollment numbers for St. Bernadette's. The subset of survey questions specific to G4 parents only. Our questions were, have you registered your child for extended French at St. Bernadette's for 2019-20? Yes was fifty-two percent. No was forty-two percent. And I've registered my child for extended French in another school was six percent. Would you have registered your child if extended French were offered at St. Matthews Catholic School? Yes was eighty-one percent. No was nineteen percent. And will you send your child to St. Bernadette's if child is offered a spot in the extended French program? Undecided was fifty percent. No was forty-four percent. Yes was six percent. So only fifty-two percent of G4 parents surveyed have opted to apply for extended French at St. Bernadette's. However, eighty-one percent of G4 parents would have registered for the program had it remained at St. Matthews. Most alarmingly, ninety-four percent of parents are undecided or will not send their child to St. Bernadette's should they be accepted. Community impact. We feel that the board has created a culture of confusion. The survey results reflect community confusion and concern over what happens next should they choose to enroll their child at St. Bernadette's in 2019-20 school year. Board communication is lacking in supporting said culture. The examples below are parent-discovered, critical decision-making information. G5 extended French students may, in fact, spend half-days in portables in 2019 and 20 at St. Bernadette's. Students must be enrolled at St. Bernadette's by December 21st or lose their spot. Busing requirements have not been determined until all students are enrolled in the program. And we have estimated the time to gain insight on busing is scheduled for March of 2019. St. Bernadette Catholic School is also a late-start school, starting thirty minutes after St. Matthews. There's unanticipated family considerations for childcare and work and educational priorities. Our survey data indicates there's a great interest in extended French programming. This indicator is also supported by high historical demand. This demand has been driven within the St. Matthews community as St. Matthews Catholic School students have brought...
Excuse me, I'd like to advise you that your ten minutes is up.
Yes, sir.
You got one minute left, actually.
Okay. So our point and our ask is eighty-six percent of our parents are stating that they're concerned about a decrease in programming for St. Matthews and ultimately Glen Abbe community. And we assume that this is just the beginning of the public backlash. We are urging the board to rescind the current decision and maintain extended French at both St. Matthews and St. Bernadette's for the 2019-20 school year. This will maintain the current program accessibility in Glen Abbe and afford both the board and community stakeholders time to collaborate on winning strategies. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. So you said here on page sixteen, the grade five early French immersion students' main facts spend half-days in a portable at St. Bernadette's. And how can you support that? Or where did you find that information?
Our understanding is that the way that the programming works today and discovery that we've had with some of the other parents has indicated that that's the case.
Any other questions? Trustee Clark.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the delegates. Thank you for coming here today and presenting. You mentioned about operational issues, right? I'd like to ask, Mr. Chair, if we could get some clarification from Director Daly. What exactly are the operational issues so we could let everybody know and have some transparency on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a bit of a clarification, and I apologize if it was confusing in the November report. My reference to operations in November was the fact that operational decisions are made by the senior admin team of the board. So trustees set broad policy, and then we put procedures in place to make operational decisions. So it's not operational issues per se at St. Matthews, but it is an operational decision. In terms of the decision throughout the board to make changes to our extended French programming, we did have a number of goals that were outlined in the November report. Those goals were consistent across all three regions as well as in the Oakville region.
Thank you, Director Daly. Any other questions?
I have another question to ask. In your first paragraph in situational overview, you said that we will be denying access to fifty percent of students at St. Matthews. Can you clarify how you came to that number, fifty percent?
So there's two classes at St. Matthews and two classes at St. Bernadette's. So we're collapsing the St. Matthews classes and only having the St. Bernadette classes. So that is a reduction in half the program availability.
Mr. Chair, can I ask on the same question, a question to Secretary, Mr. Daly? Do we ever deny French immersion program to any students? Do we make provision to help them? Or will we kind of continue denying as specified here?
Well, there is an application process to our extended French programs regardless of where they're housed. We do have currently a maximum of two per grade. So while we are changing our location from St. Matthews to St. Bernadette's, we're also adding locations in Oakville. You might argue that, in fact, a student might have a greater access to particular programs because now three schools will be feeding into each of the extended French programs. So we've been able to hopefully be able to give more opportunities for students to access extended French.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Daly?
You may.
Can we have access to the November report? Because as families, we're just not aware how the decision was derived. I know that you're noting that the decision was derived based on three kind of common factors. But as a school community, it's very difficult to have a program, you know, be moved and not understand what those underlying factors are. And it feels arbitrary as a recipient to not have any disclosure. And at the other end of the spectrum is we're still accepting cross-boundary applications. And it feels like someone's making that decision and someone else is making the programming decision for French, and they don't seem to be aligned.
Okay, I'll try and address, there was a couple of things there. So the report that was given to trustees in November is available on the board website. It's part of the board meeting minutes. If there's a feeling amongst the community that that information should have came out earlier or that it could have been communicated more directly, I don't disagree with that. But again, based on a decision to move a program under the purview of the director's ability to make those operational decisions, it really wouldn't have been a consultative process. It would have been explaining why the decision was made. And if that wasn't clearly explained early on, then I do apologize for that.
Thank you very much. We're going to pass on to the next, to the second delegation. We have Sophia Kusik and Sybil Yardimoglu. Did I say that right?
Can I just test this? Okay. Yes, it works. Good. Do you want to do it? Yes. All right. Hello, good evening. Thank you, the board members and the trustees, for the opportunity to present here. My friends, Dr. Sophia Kusik and myself, Sybil Yardimoglu, would like to talk on behalf of concerned parents of St. Matthews. We would like to point to accessible education for students with disabilities. Will the extended French program relocation meet the needs of all students? Our purpose is to request the best solution for all French immersion students in the Halton Catholic School Board community affected during possible school relocation. We would like to raise our concerns with regards to the potential harmful consequences of moving students to a new school environment without an identification, assessment, and accommodation strategy of currently at-risk students in the St. Matthews school. We recommend that the board place an indefinite hold on its plans to remove the program from St. Matthew Catholic School until it can determine in writing that it is not in violation of the most recent policy revisions from the Ontario Human Rights Commission. My friend Sophia will continue.
Thank you, Sybil. And thank you, board, for listening to our concerns. So I just want to go into a very quick background of what has been happening for the last six months and some questions that arise from it. On June 5th, there was a regular board meeting that concluded and it published that there would be a program revision due in 2020-21, as is listed here in the quote. Later on, unrelated to that, on August 29th, the Ontario Human Rights Commission released a new policy and recommendations for accessible education. In September, we all had a great start to a new year. And then October 25th, the board announces the removal of the extended French program from St. Matthew's School via an email to only grade four students and parents. Obviously, there were some concerns that arose out of this announcement, and we tabled a delegation and requested transparency and stakeholder engagement on November 6th. And this leads us to our present moment, which is that it appears that some St. Matthew's students with exceptionalities are forced to choose between what appears to be an unsafe community of relocation to a different school or extended French. And so here are our questions. Because we really don't know what happened between June 5th and the release of the announcement of the removal. When was the decision to relocate the extended French program from St. Matthew made? And moving onwards from August 29th, did the board review the new policy amendments issued by the Human Rights Commission prior to making its decision to relocate the program? And cascading from that, as of October 25th, how is the board assessing and identifying eligible students? And how is the board accommodating eligible students who fall within the August 29th extended definition of disability? A quick review, we all know about the Ontario Human Rights Commission, and essentially it guarantees the right to equal treatment and has recognized the need to address the special needs of students that face obstacles in their attempts to access educational services in Ontario, such as, in this case, the extended French program. Moreover, just to add to that, the Ontario Human Rights Commission's policy as of August 29th extends disabilities to a broader inclusion of environmental sensitivities, as would be in the case of students that are experiencing environmental stress of school relocation. And the policy places emphasis on accommodations that promote integration and full participation. So this leads us to our current case. The student's name obviously has been changed to protect the student's privacy and identity. But let's say it's John. He's a grade five student, a grade four student at St. Matthew's School, and his family has always planned on including him in extended French in the educational plan. In fact, John's family chose to purchase a home within the St. Matthew catchment area to ensure that he would be habituated in the school. And his parents hoped that he would be able to participate in the extended French program without the added anxiety and tremendous fear of having to switch schools, take a school bus, and adapt to a whole new school environment in grade five. Due to his condition, John will only be able to participate now in the extended French program apart from his current community with severe emotional and psychological repercussions, unless the move will be appropriately dealt with. But under the current circumstances, John and other students with exceptionalities are forced to choose between a safe environment within their school or the extended French program in an unsafe environment, maybe unsure environment. So we're asking the board, which students are actually affected? How is the board identifying and assessing eligible students? John's situation is one of several St. Matthew's students with disabilities. The need for the board to identify and assess students with disabilities has not once been mentioned by the board in their transition plans. However, the current program at St. Matthew's School provides a well-situated and habituated environment for the current students. So what is the board's policy and strategy in writing for identifying and assessing students with mental... And his parents hoped that he would be able to participate in the extended French program without the added anxiety and tremendous fear of having to switch schools, take a school bus and adapt to a whole new school environment in grade five. Due to his condition, John will only be able to participate now in the extended French program apart from his current community with severe emotional and psychological repercussions, unless the move will be appropriately dealt with. But under the current circumstances, John and other students with exceptionalities are forced to choose between a safe environment within their school or the extended French program in an unsafe environment, maybe unsure environment. So we're asking the board, which students are actually affected? How is the board identifying and assessing eligible students? John's situation is one of several St. Matthew's students with disabilities. The need for the board to identify and assess students with disabilities has not once been mentioned by the board in their transitions plans. However, the current program at St. Matthew's School provides a well-situated and habituated environment for the current students. So what is the board's policy and strategy in writing for identifying and assessing students with mental disabilities that are being uprooted? Or is the board planning on excluding these students by self-elimination from the opportunity to learn extended French because there's no apparent plan to identify them for undue harm resulting from new and extremely stressful situations? Moreover, how is the board accommodating at-risk students? As mentioned before, John is just one of many students, possible students at St. Matthew's with disabilities. What seems to be a premature plan of at least two years fails to address how the expanded definition of disability and duty to accommodate are going to be addressed in this new environment. In moving the program without seeking community input and without providing adequate notice to key stakeholders such as parents with students with disabilities, the board may be excluding and failing to meet the educational needs of these most vulnerable members. We are asking the board to allow full integration and participation of all the students, including those with disabilities in the extended French program. So therefore, we're asking, what is the board's policy and strategy in writing for accommodating the psychological needs of students with mental disabilities that are being uprooted? Or is the board planning on excluding these students by self-elimination from this opportunity to learn extended French because there is no apparent plan to integrate them into a new and extremely stressful environment for them due to their condition? I'll pass over for summary of questions to Sybil.
Thank you. So here are the review of concerns and questions. For the sake of transparency, when was the decision to relocate the extended French program from St. Matthew's made? Second, did the board review the new policy amendments issued by the Human Rights Commission prior to making its decision to relocate the program? What is the board's policy and strategy in writing for identifying and assessing students with mental disabilities that are being uprooted? What is the board's policy and strategy in writing for accommodating the psychological needs of students with mental disabilities that are being uprooted? We recommend that the board place an indefinite hold on its plans to remove the program from St. Matthew's until it can determine in writing that it is not in violation of the most recent policy revisions from the Ontario Human Rights Commission. Thank you very much. These are the sources that we consulted for this presentation. Thank you very much for listening us, our concerns. We are aware that this is a big undertaking and we really appreciate if you take our considerations, our concerns into consideration and address them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from the trustees for clarification purposes?
So through you, Mr. Chair. I've got a question for Superintendent Supriyan. Actually, I've got two questions if that's okay. So one is, I'm just, and thank you very much for your delegation. I appreciate you coming here tonight. It's not always the easiest thing to do, so thank you for that. So the first question I have is I'm just wondering what the number of students we might be looking at that could be affected, so identified students that are at St. Matthew's currently? Then I can ask my second one after if that's.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. We currently have 188 students in extended French at St. Matthew's currently from grade five to grade eight. Of those 188, approximately nine percent of them are identified students with special needs, with an exceptionality. Now those students, just to be clear, those students would not be affected because I believe as part of the plan, the transition, the plan to change the location, all students currently enrolled in extended French at St. Matthew's will be grandfathered until the end of grade eight. So no students currently, both those with exceptionalities or those without, would be affected by the change in location. They would, they would remain at St. Matthew's till the end of their graduation at grade eight, including those that are in grade five currently.
Sorry, and just one more question for you, Mr. Chair. The other question I have is with respect to the, so how are we going to meet the needs of those students, you know, up to that grade five point with respect to transitions, changing of schools, some of the things that the delegations had asked tonight?
Sure. And through you, Mr. Chair, again, once again. And it's an excellent point, an excellent question, because we currently do have students with special needs in extended French at St. Matthew's that have not come from St. Matthew's. So those students could have experienced some of the anxieties that you, that you'd mentioned earlier in your delegation. I'm very proud of the work that we do in special education with our consultants, our attendants, in transitioning students from one school to another, regardless of the program. We, our, our staff are very heavily involved in transitioning students when they are leaving one school and entering another school, whether it's from grade eight to grade nine and students with special needs. The schools meet together, families are invited, they're part of that transition plan for visits to help with that anxiety about changing schools. Sometimes it's a change in school because of a boundary change. Sometimes it's a change in school because the parents move. We work very hard with families, with both schools, to transition those students into the new location. In fact, we have a very good relationship with our co-terminus board. And oftentimes, we also meet, if a, if a parent and family is moving to the public system, we will also have those transition meetings for students with special needs, again, to make sure that they land softly and meet with success when they do enter the new, the new site.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hearn.
Thank you. Through the chair. Thank you, delegation. It's not easy to delegate. I just have a clarification. On page 31, you talk about present situation, and I just need some clarity where you say forced to choose between an unsure safe community environment or French. Are you saying that it's unsafe community at St. Bernadette's or, I just need clarity on what that means?
So unsure and unsafe means that people are unsure about how safe this environment would be. And just to follow up with what we were hearing from that corner of the room, in fact, having talked with parents of students with, that would now fall under the new extended disabilities, they are unsure. And I'm relieved to hear that there is a great effort done, however, they did not know about this effort at all. And so they are eliminating themselves from applying to the lottery because there was, as we had heard in the previous delegation, and very unfortunately, no notice given about the change of this program. There was no communication or stakeholder forum made so that parents with children of disabilities would be put at ease, so that they would actually be assured in writing about everything that goes on. Obviously, you can sympathize that if a parent has a student with a great need, they need to review what is going to happen, they need to plan ahead. But it does seem like this current decision is premature because it appeared out of nowhere in a great rush and it has closed. So these people did actually not apply because they did not know about the effort. So that was what we're saying. It was unsure. They did not know. Did that answer your question?
Just a, so you're not saying St. Bernadette is unsafe? You're just saying they're being.
We don't know.
Okay. I just want clarity. Thank you.
We hope that it is, obviously, yeah.
Trustee O'Brien.
First question, the reason for the move is to optimize an underutilized school, St. Bernadette's, and to make a school like St. Matthew's more to 100% capacity, correct?
That would be one of the goals, correct? One of a number.
That being the goal, my second question, is there not a major development that borders the St. Bernadette's area, Sawwet, Milk Development? And would that not bring St. Bernadette up to maximum capacity soon anyway? So putting a French, extended French program would just possibly overload that school as well?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Currently, so the Sawwet community is being developed now. Currently, those students, the plan for those students would be to attend St. Mary Catholic Elementary School, not St. Bernadette's. Depending on the numbers that are yielded from that area, we would have two other schools in the area with available capacity where we could direct. St. Bernadette's would not be the first. Boy, sorry. St. Bernadette's would not be the first choice in terms of students in the Sawwet community.
So thank you very much. I'm, the response to the delegation will be dealt with under the agenda 8.1. Thank you for your delegation. We will now move to the approval of the minutes. Moving to the approval of the minutes on November 20th, 2018, regular board meeting. Now, this was an exceptional motion as the current board of trustees were not yet in office on November 20th. However, the previous board did approve the minutes as presented via email prior to the end of their term. Trustee Carabella, who was serving as trustee and in attendance on November 20th, board meeting, came a candidate to this as, as the, as candidate director of education as well. As we need a board motion for the approval of the official minutes, the board meetings, I will ask trustee Carabella to please move this motion and I will ask for a second. Trustee Carabella?
I move the motion to approve the minutes.
May I have a second? Trustee Agnew? All in favor? Motion carries. Let the record show that the minutes of November 20th, 2018, regular board meeting are approved as presented. Moving on to the approval of the minutes on, of the December 4th, 2018 inaugural board meeting, I will ask for a mover and a second. Trustee Duarte? Second. Trustee O'Hearn? All in favor? Motion carries. Let the record show that the minutes of the December 4th, 2018 inaugural board meeting are approved as presented. Moving on to the business arising from previous meetings, the next item on the agenda is business arising from previous meetings at table on page 51 of your package will be included in all board agendas and it includes the running list of the matters pending from previous Item 8, 8.1, response to the delegation. I would like to thank all the delegates from St. Matthew's School for our presentations. We are bound together tonight on a common goal and the well-being of our children and the desire of quality programs of our Catholic schools. As a former resident of Glen Abbe and member of St. Matthew's Church for many years, I have witnessed firsthand the quality of the extended French programs in both St. Matthew's and St. Bernadette's. Both my sons attended these schools. When we moved west of Third Line, we had no choice but to enroll them in the extended French programs in St. Bernadette's, not more than three kilometers away really, from St. Matthew's, that is. I understand your frustrations. My colleagues and I are committed to the transparency and community engagement that we promised. Hearing the delegation tonight is our first step towards that, that goal. That said and done, trustees must now determine how to proceed in response to tonight's delegations. In accordance with our board bylaws, policy 1-06, delegation of the board, we have four options to take. We can receive the delegation as information. We can defer the matter to a future meeting. We can request staff, staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting or make a decision tonight on this matter. I will now open the floor. Patrick Murphy, recognized, to any trustee who may want to put a motion on the floor on how to proceed with tonight's delegations. Patrick, move.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I move that we accept both delegations' presentations as information.
Do we have a second? Trustee O'Hearn? The motion is up for, for discussion? No questions. I will now call for a vote on this matter. You have a question?
The St. Matthew's community did state that in our long-term capital plan, it does state that school banner review program review, pupil accommodation review will include many opportunities for public consultation. I think we should at least maybe talk about that. I mean, they have cited something that is in our long-term capital plan and if we said it and to not address this in some way, I feel would be a disservice to this community. I, I don't know if they, stakeholder feedback is the way to go, but, but it does say that in the long-term capital plan. I'd be anxious to hear what the other trustees have to say on this.
Trustee O'Brien, we have a motion on the floor and we're at the point where it needs to be voted on. So I'd like to carry on with that. Trustee Carabella?
Well, point of order would be if the, if the motion is on the floor, we can debate it. I would like to suggest that we take it more seriously than a point of information, so I would be voting against that motion. I have one to put forward that would, that would, if that motion, if this motion that we're voting on doesn't, doesn't pass, then I would put forward a motion to delay, to vote the matter this evening and delay phasing out the extended French immersion program for the 2019, 2020 year and instead use that year, the 2019, 2020 year, to hold collaborative community stakeholder consultations and feedback and then recommendations for the 2020, 21 school year be then brought forward for approval. So I just want to say that I would think that it needs a bit more looking at than just to receive as information.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I will move, I will move to a vote on the motion on the floor. Trustee Carabella?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Matson?
I'm in favor.
Trustee DuBrien?
Opposed.
Trustee Herrera?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte? Trustee O'Hearn?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Thank you. We present to the delegations tonight, you will receive a formal written response from the Director of Education and Secretary of the Board confirming the decision of the board to receive your delegation as information. Thank you very much. Trustee Guzzo, as Chair of Policy Committee, will speak to the next four items on the related policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accepts the recommendation of the Policy Committee, that policy I-14 smoking ban may be changed to policy I-14 smoking/vaping ban and be approved as amended.
I'll ask for a mover. Trustee Murphy, a second, seconded by? Trustee Agnew? Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item eight point three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May it be, may it be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accepts the recommendation of the Policy Committee, that policy I dash two six student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board be approved as amended.
I'll ask for a mover. Trustee O'Hearn, second there. Trustee Duarte? Discussions? Seeing none? In favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I will ask for a mover, uh, no, eight point four, policy two dash twenty, child abuse and protection of students.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May it be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accepts the recommendation of the Policy Committee, that policy II dash two zero, child abuse and protected, protection of students be approved as amended.
I'll ask for a mover. Trustee Duarte, second there. Trustee Agnew? Discussion? No discussion? All, all in favor? Motion passes. Eight point five, policy two dash twenty-eight, alcohol, tobacco, vaping and drug education and abuse in schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accepts the recommendation of the Policy Committee, that policy II dash two eight, alcohol, tobacco and drug education and abuse in schools may be changed to policy II dash two eight, alcohol, tobacco, vaping and drug education and abuse in schools and be approved as amended.
Ask for a mover. Trustee O'Hearn, second there. Trustee Duarte? Discussion? None? All in favor? Motion passes. Staff reports. Item nine point one, proposed two, two thousand and nineteen facility renewal project. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Uh, we present the proposed twenty nineteen facility renewal project. So, these are, uh, renewal and renovation projects proposed for completion in the summer of twenty nineteen, so next summer. Uh, this is in line with the board's long-term facility renewal strategy, which we presented back in October. Uh, so in this report, we have seven schools identified for work, uh, this coming summer. Um, I'll rattle through the work, uh, quickly here and then, uh, I'll ask some questions at the end. So, um, starting off on the list, we have Assumption in Burlington. Um, uh, this is slated for turf replacements, for the artificial turf field replacement. Um, this is in addition to the major, uh, addition and, and renovation project that was already approved last spring for the Assumption community. Uh, next, we, we have, uh, Bishop Reading Secondary School in Milton. Uh, this is a refresh of wear and tear items, uh, lockers, paint flooring, and an update of, of the, the balance of the school. Um, we're hopefully expecting a, uh, approval shortly on a, uh, on a, a large renovation or addition and renovation there as well, uh, with provincial money. Uh, but this would update the, of the balance of the school to match the, um, the, the new addition that we have going there as well. Uh, moving down to Burlington, Canadian Martyrs, uh, we've replaced a roof on Canadian Martyrs Elementary School last summer. Uh, and now moving into the interior doing HVAC, so the ventilation, air conditioning and heating there, um, LED lighting and then some wear and tear items in the building. Uh, Norrington Secondary School in Burlington, uh, we did the HVAC and lighting, uh, work last summer, but now we're moving on to, uh, wear and tear items in the school as well as doing a turf replacement, uh, for the artificial turf field. Uh, St. Gabriel's Catholic Elementary School in Burlington, uh, HVAC work, uh, LED upgrades, uh, and wear and tear items in that school. Um, St. Mark's, uh, Catholic Elementary School in Burlington, the HVAC and LED work was completed last summer, um, but it's a, uh, we have an addition going on there right now as well. So, uh, moving into the, uh, the wear and tear items, replacing those within the school as well as some asbestos removal in the, uh, in the older portion of the building. And then finally on the list, we have St. Michael's Catholic Elementary School in Oakville, renovations to the building. Um, we are expecting a new addition there as well, a provincially funded new addition there. Um, so we did a, a lot of work there last summer, um, but the, uh, the new addition, uh, of the, this renewal fund, uh, would be in addition to the, the building addition, uh, and, uh, doing an off, converting the existing, uh, office at the school into a classroom, uh, converting the existing library at the school into the, uh, into a, the new office space, and then the new addition will house the new library. Uh, and I'm going to talk about, to that a little bit more later on when we get into the, uh, sketch plan, uh, designs for the St. Michael's addition, uh, which is coming up a little later on our agenda. Um, but all the projects totaled together is just under fourteen million dollars. Uh, the board currently has about twenty-eight point four million dollars in our capital reserves, so, uh, enough money to, to fund these, uh, uh, these projects. Uh, and we have two resolutions, uh, for trustee consideration that will be brought back to the January fifteenth meeting. Uh, so the first resolution is to approve, uh, staff to proceed with the projects and the second is to approve the project budget. And if you have any questions, uh, trustees may have on, uh, on both projects for next summer.
Trustee Duarte?
Question for superintendent. Uh, we know that there's a delay in funding for the BR construction and you are requesting the money for twenty nineteen. Uh, so are you still going ahead with, uh, with the refresh of the school even though construction is not going to happen or are you going to hold on? There's some work that needs to be done in the school immediately.
Thank you. Um, we would still, this work here is all in the existing building. Um, we're not allowed to add, uh, any square footage to the building with our own, own funds. Those have to come from, from the province and be approved by the province. So, I'm very hopeful that by, by next summer, we will have approval, um, from the province to proceed with the addition and then these funds here would then supplement, um, the renovations going on in the existing building. So, we do all the work at the same time. Um, but, uh, you know, the, the provincial funds would be used for the, the new addition and then our own board funds, um, presented here would be for the renovations of the existing building.
Any other questions? Moving on to ten point three, two, twenty eighteen dash nineteen revised budget estimates including September. Date? With William Charabois?
So, that's probably the first time I've ever been looked over. I never thought it was small, but at least it, it's nice to feel diversified now. Uh, so basically there, there hasn't been that much that's happened over the, uh, the last few weeks. Uh, however, uh, basically, uh, the main thing that is going on is Senate has decided on their, uh, new initiative to pursue this year and it's focused on indigenous culture education with a little bit of a, bit of a twist, uh, that I know where all the student trustees are pretty excited to see. This year's Senate would like to put a heavy emphasis on music, dance, uh, and art, so kind of a new way to approach indigenous culture than we've seen before. Uh, so we're, we're definitely really excited to see how that goes. Uh, we've received our approval from Mr. Daly, so we are currently underway in planning. Uh, I will be meeting with-
Tentative.
Tentative, yes. I'll be meeting with board staff to ensure that it's appropriate and we follow all the board, uh, the board steps and it, it goes along with the board's message. But assuming that everything goes as planned, we, we are to, starting off with a good start. Uh, we will be drafting up a, a senate planning committee, so a group of students who are, are pretty passionate about planning, but also passionate about the initiative they decided on. Uh, and they'll be working really closely with myself and the other student trustees to really get this initiative up and running. Over the last few weeks, I've also had calls with all of our lead senators, getting a sense of what they want to see and what their senators want to see. Uh, due to our senate meeting last week being, uh, being canceled, uh, we've, we've resulted in, into the calls so we can still get the information that we want, uh, so we can act in the best interest of all students across the board. Um, as well as the Ontario Student Trustees Association, uh, I believe yesterday, uh, released a press release following the, the EPO funding cuts. Uh, and all of our, our student trustees were, were a little bit involved in, uh, drafting, drafting everything together and assuring that, you know, we are voicing, uh, the voice of students within the board, but also across Ontario. Uh, so that, that press release has actually taken a bit of a, a bit of a swing at the, uh, the decision. The Toronto Star and a lot of CBC radio shows have already picked it up within a day, a couple of days of it being out. Uh, so it is nice to see the, the work of student trustees, uh, on a provincial level, uh, as well as, now's a, a pretty stressful time for all of our, all of our grade twelve students. I know it's, it's funny to say that we're all going to be, some of us are going to be leaving given that we've just met. Uh, but, uh, so to, to provide some context, universities are already starting to accept, so the, the stress is increasing for some students, but decreasing for others. Uh, so we, we are seeing a bit of a, a bit of a happy twist, but for others, not so much. Uh, as requested by Stephanie, she would like to mention that she's been accepted to a few programs at Laureate in Waterloo. And then, uh, I myself have been accepted to Carlton Ottawa and Dalhousie so far. So, you know, it's day, day two of meeting all of you and we're already talking about leaving. Uh, and then Denzel, well, I guess you're stuck with him for a little while. Sorry, Denzel. Uh, but other than that, uh, we'll keep you updated with anything, uh, that change within the life of students.
Thank you. I may have left someone else in the dust, uh, in my haste here. Um, ten point two.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and through you, uh, presented for information are the approved school educational trips and I welcome questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, trustees are presented with the revised budget for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank my staff and, uh, show my appreciation for the many late hours and weekends that, uh, they have put through to, uh, put this together. Um, as trustees, uh, may recall, uh, mid-November is when we file our financial statement, so we really only have less than a month to go through the entire budget and, uh, file it. So, I just wanted to say thank you for, for being there, for being late. Uh, and today we have Aaron Loft, our Senior, uh, Manager of Financial Services and Jay Chantavag, our Manager of Budget and Capital, who will, uh, walk you in a minute through the revised budget just to give you a bit more information in terms of the differences between the budget and the revised budget, walk, walk you through, uh, that, uh, change, uh, between the two cycles. Um, I just wanted to mention that the report outlines a surplus position with, uh, continuing to build our operating re, and capital reserves, uh, in accordance with our budget objectives. Uh, and just, uh, so that trustees are familiar with how our reports are structured, uh, on the first page, you'll see, uh, a number of reports that reference the budget from its inception and, um, the, the updates that have been provided to the board all the way to its approval. Uh, and then we walk into a more general comments and that outlines our financial position on the second page of the report and then page three, four, and five, uh, itemize the, the changes, uh, the differences between the two, uh, budget cycles. Uh, the report at the end in the appendices has a, a number of, um, schedules attached that, uh, break down the revenue and expenses in different ways in accordance with our ministry reporting. So, uh, I know it's, it's a little different than a typical corporation, but that provides you a lot of details, uh, behind, uh, our numbers and, uh, they're there for your information and, uh, um, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to, to walk you through. Uh, I will now like to pass it, Mr. Chair, to Aaron and Jay to walk you through the presentation and provide you more, uh, context around the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Jay and I would like to go through, as Roxanne mentioned, the twenty eighteen, nineteen revised budget. So, looking first, we're going to take a look at the enrollment. And why do we look to start with enrollment? Well, enrollment is our main driver. And what does that drive? That drives our revenue, which is the second point we're going to be looking at. Uh, following that, we're going to look at our expenses, compare them both to what we forecasted back in June as well as what we're forecasting now, knowing the information, um, that resulted in our financial statements that we, um, that was of the end of August. From the revenue and expenses, we end up with a surplus or a deficit. Well, fortunately for us, we're in a surplus position, so we'll be talking about that. And finally, uh, we're going to be talking about the education program other or the EPO, which everyone has, I'm sure, heard, uh, talked extensively in the news. Um, and it's good to hear our student trustees too, we're, we're looking at that as well. So, looking at enrollment, which is our main driver for revenue. So, as you can see, there's a chart here that shows our progressive increase in enrollment over the past ten year, over the past ten years. And as you can see, it seems to be going up every single year, starting back in twenty ten and actually even before that. This is only ten years of data, but this trend has been going along before this. Now, this is a more granular look at our revenue. So, you can see here that we're looking, or sorry, at our enrollment, not our revenue. Um, we're looking here at a comparison between our financial statements in seventeen, eighteen, so our August financial statements, as well as what we're now forecasting for enrollment for twenty eighteen, nineteen. And you can see there's a healthy increase in our enrollment. What we have forecasted now is well over thirty-five thousand students. We're approaching thirty-six thousand students, um, with a large increase in both the secondary and the elementary panel. Now, this chart here is also comparing our enrollment, but it's looking at what we forecasted back in June to what we have currently. So, as you can see, we've also, also increased from what we forecasted back in June, uh, with a large increase in the elementary panel. You can see there's an additional four hundred and fifty students in the elementary panel alone. Now, this increase as a board is about one point six percent. Now, we strive to be about the one percent area. Now, this year has been an exception. It's an exceptionally, uh, higher enrollment than, uh, than we're initially anticipating. So, from enrollment, like I said, it drives our revenue. Now, this graph here is what our estimated revenues were back in June. We were forecasting about twenty-eight million dollars in revenue and around that chart, it shows the sources of our revenue. Now, the majority of our revenue is at the, is from the provincial government, so it's about eighty-nine percent. There's other program revenue at about point eight five percent and the provincial legislative grants at about eighty-eight percent. Now, how does that compare to what we have now as a result of the additional enrollment? Well, now we're at four hundred and thirty-three and a half million or so. Again, though, if you look at the percentages, the percentages are roughly the same as they were back in June, it's just the amounts have increased. So, looking here, we're looking at our budget estimates, revenue versus what we had back in June for our, our budgeted estimates. We have a revised current versus our budgeted back in June. And you can see the large portion of that revenue change is relating to provincial grants. And why is that? Well, four point two million or so is relating, uh, primarily to enrollment growth. Um, you can see that we have other provincial grants, uh, increasing about four hundred thousand or so. And what basically those are, are our education program others that have been announced since June. Uh, we've had, we've had, we have had some, some that have been announced since June, as well as moving in some, uh, deferred revenue. And you can see that we have some other items down there below. Uh, obviously not the same percentage, um, as the provincial legislative grants, but still, um, some additional revenues in both student tuition and succumbent and miscellaneous revenues. Uh, Jay's going to take over and look at expenses?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, so this first graph is, uh, a look at our, um, original budget estimates for expenses. Um, that was approved back in June. Um, it's broken down similar to the revenues, uh, graph. It's, um, except it's, uh, broken down by ex, major expense area. Uh, the largest three being, uh, classroom instruction, uh, students, or school support services and school operation maintenance. Um, that totals about seventy-five percent of our total budget of, uh, four hundred and nineteen million. That was approved back in June again. Uh, so this next, uh, graph is similar to the previous one. It's for the revised estimates, uh, that we've, uh, put together over the past month. Uh, it totals four hundred and twenty-five million and again, broken down the same, the same way. And, um, again, the larger, largest items, uh, stayed about the same. Um, and every other item's roughly the same too percentage-wise.
I just wanted to, to mention on this chart, if you go back, Jay, um, if you're looking at the percentages and you're thinking, what do we spend on students? It really is everything around there other than the board administration and, um, I would say a portion of the recoverable expenses, even though most of that would- would say a portion of the recoverable expenses, even though most of that would be certain positions that would be, um, seconded to the ministry to work on new curriculum and programs to be provincially, uh, deployed. So really, everything we have in here focuses directly or indirectly on, on the student and the student environment and the transportation for the students.
Uh, so this next slide will show a, a table of, um, the original budget estimates and the revised estimates, uh, the dollars, uh, along with the, uh, dollar change and percentage change, uh, over the two budget periods. Uh, just to touch on the, um, the larger increases, uh, the classroom instruction and, uh, school support services increased the most, um, and this is, um, essentially tied to, um, staffing increases, as well as, um, year-end rollovers from the previous fiscal year, uh, 2017-18. Uh, and the other, uh, uh, somewhat larger increase was in, uh, board administration, and again, that's, um, tied to the, uh, carryforwards from the previous fiscal year, as well as program enhancements, uh, and these items will be, um, elaborated further on the next few slides. So this, oh.
Why would board have any three, uh, uh, rollovers?
Uh, the, the two major items there are, uh, a rollover for our financial system implementation. Um, so they were, so we had to, we have to upgrade our financial systems, and we had the money earmarked in the previous year, but they weren't spent, so we had to carry it forward to this fiscal year that we're currently in. And then...
I was just in a moment, maybe just a moment, right?
It...
Hey, Mr. Chair. Um, just as, as history, uh, for, for the board, perhaps, uh, I'd like to mention that , uh, we're currently, uh, we have two system and, uh, system implementations that we're working through. We're updating our, uh, financial system, and we're updating our payroll module. Uh, there is an implementation budget that comes with it, which has been part of last year's budget, but implementing a system is a long process. It crosses years. So we spent a portion of that budget last year, and we had a portion remaining because work is still going this year. We brought the money in, in, in a, a deferred revenue, i- it's part of our reserves, and we'll, we'll be, uh, outlining it i- in a bit in a couple of slides, but also the expenses reflected in, in this increase. So it has nothing to do with student enrollment. It has to do with that, uh, expense having crossed years, but it comes with budget with it, so it's actually a budget-neutral item.
Um, sorry, where's my spot? Uh, okay, so yeah, the next, um, table is, uh, a list of our staffing enhancements. Um, about fifty, almost fifty-three, um, full-time equivalent staff were, uh, added to the budget, uh, from the previous budget period i- in June. Um, the large majority being, um, classroom instruction staff or, uh, school support staff, uh, and this totals about two point four million. Uh, in addition to that, we increased our contingencies for, uh, sick leaves and increased the benefit costs, uh, about one point three. Uh, so between the two, it's, uh, three point six million dollar increase, um, and again, that's to classroom instruction and school support service, uh, expense area. So then the next slide...
And just, uh, just on that, uh, Jay, um, we've itemized every single position that was added since the budget, so this, this is it. We have not added, um, anything that wasn't related to growth, or in the case of the language instruction as a, uh, officer, it's an additional federal grant that was announced, so it comes, it's an offset, uh, revenue and expense. As you will note, there, uh, isn't any board administration position that was added, so those, uh, cost increases have to do with programs from the prior year, and there is one item, uh, later on the slide that is also captured in there, uh, which we'll go through in a minute.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you. Um, through you, M- Mr. Chair. So the secretarial school staff, is that not a, administrative staff here? Or...
Secretarial school staff is school administration, which is different than board administration. Board administration are, um, the central, uh, b- board staff, which include finance, payroll, purchasing, HR, uh, some, uh, certain positions certainly deployed, uh, such as our psychologists, uh, for example, um, chaplaincy leader a- and so forth. The school, uh, secretarial school staff, or the school administrator, the principals and vice principals, they are bound by the, the size of a school. So with enrollment, if we, if it goes beyond certain levels, it requires an addition of various levels. So that's how growth stimulates the number of positions. And sometimes a school will lose one, and that will move somewhere else where there is a need. So no, i- i- it is not captured in the board administration, it is captured under the, the school, uh, administration allocation.
That's government-funded, that position, then?
The, the, the school secretaries, they're all government-funded. Uh, I would mention the link is, is a federal grant, but the rest are all within our grants for student needs, which is the main driver of, uh, Ministry of Education funding for our board. Yes.
Trustee O'Hearn.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question. Um, secondment or secondment, what is that for my education?
As, as I mentioned earlier, when I was saying, some of the secondments and recovery, some of our staff get seconded to another organization or the ministry, um, uh, whether it's to a union organization or an association that is related with the education sector or the ministry, to work for them for a period of time. They cover up the cost of the salary and benefits for that position. Um, if we need to replace that position, then somebody else will step into that role. We have a number of, uh, teaching staff, as well as a couple of school administrators, principals or, uh, vice principals, that are, uh, representing us and being seconded to in various contracts, um, and some within the ministry, uh, where they would work on various provincial, um, programs that may be then, uh, delivered throughout the province. And when that secondment is completed, they return back to their previous position. So while they're seconded, there's a revenue source that covers for their position, um, and they have various, uh, ending dates, in which case, sometimes we would add, uh, a position, sometimes we would subtract. It is all budget-neutral, because it all depends on the contracts that come, um, for our staff, and, um, it will vary, and it doesn't have to do with enrollment or growth in terms of proportion.
All right. So, uh, the next slide, um, itemizes the, uh, 2017-18 year-end rollover items. So, uh, items one to nine are essentially, uh, items that were, uh, that had budget committed to them, uh, in the last fiscal year, but they weren't, um, realized, uh, up to August thirty-first, 2018, so we've pushed them to the current fiscal year. Um, as mentioned before, the financial systems are, uh, item number nine there, uh, as well as various other, um, uh, staffing or, uh, instruction-related, uh, items. Uh, and then item number ten, uh, are the school budget, uh, rollovers from the previous year into the new year. Uh, they total four hundred sixty-five thousand, and in total, um, all of them add up to one point three. So the next slide...
And just on that, I don't mean to interrupt Jay every half-slide, but, uh, uh, we've mentioned the revenue increasing by five point six million, and we've mentioned the expenses have increased by six point one. Well, on that six point one, in those expenses, one point three is covered by these rollovers, which is on top of the five point five increase in revenue. So really, if you take that away, you're looking at, um, four point eight million or so in expenses that are attributable to the five point six million increase in revenue. So just so you're comparing in terms of our financial position, if you take away the rollover, which comes with money, but also the expense then gets carried over, uh, but it gets carried over through our surplus, we actually increase the revenue by more than we've increased expenses, and that is reflected in a better surplus available for compliance, which we'll get to in a minute.
And I'll be passed off to Aaron for the rest of the, uh, slides.
Yes, Trustee O'Brien.
These items on page thirteen and fourteen, um, did the previous board vote on these items in their previous budget?
Um, items on ida, uh, uh, slide thirteen, as I mentioned before, they're items that were budgeted and approved already in the seventeen-18 budget that are rolling over with money attached into the, this year. So it, it really has, uh, zero budget implication for eighteen-19. We're identifying them because expenses will also go up, but it, it, we have deferred revenue that comes in and covers for them, okay? So slide thirteen is budget-neutral, it relates to money rolled over from seventeen-18 that was available to them, the, the timing of the expenses moved into this year, money rolls over, expense rolls over. So I would say zero impact on the budget. The, the next one is certain other items that we've included into the budget, as I mentioned before, five point six million increase in revenue, four point eight million increase in expenses, gave us another eight hundred thousand to work with in or, and still stay within the same budget that was approved in June. So what we have put through, uh, because of where we are, are these items that we, uh, are going to enhance some of the current programs and put some money back into the system, and here's the list of them. So it is still staying within the June budget.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. The June ninth, June eighteenth board meeting does cite that, um, in the minutes that the job evaluation officer was turned down, and yet now it's appearing on, uh, our revised budget. Could you speak to that?
Uh, yes. So the job evaluation officer, uh, as well as the job evaluation review, the item four and five go together, so it's not one or the other. Um, that has been turned down a couple of times at the last board meeting. Um, it is one of those items in a departmental budget that should be, uh, uh, something that is an automatic, every five to seven years, a review of the, the job evaluation, uh, uh, an i- independent review to let us know where we are in terms of our salaries compared to market. Every other employee group within the board has a mechanism to do so through collective bargaining, um, those, the salaries get, uh, negotiated, and there, there's more consistency across the province. The non-union don't have that. So this, these particular items have been, uh, brought over, but, uh, voted out of the budget for motions, I would say, even though the budget did meet the objective set by the board. So yes, they have been. Uh, I will also want to mention that in the previous budget, um, there was another item at one point, all new initiatives have been voted down, as Trustee Carabella might remember. Uh, one of them was an empower, a reading, uh, program, which we've made it work within the current budget. This is no different. We think this is important, and we have the money within that, uh, budget that was approved in June to, to do so. It's a one-time item, um, and it still ends up with a stronger financial position that we had budgeted for.
If I can interject just a minute, uh, Trustee O'Brien, I want to bring to the attention that it's, we're approaching ten o'clock.
Okay, great. Uh, but I think it's important, it's a governance issue, this is a governance question. A board voted on a motion, turned down a position, and all of a sudden it appears, um, on the revised budget. I put this question out to all the trustees, as a governance issue, is that a good thing?
Trustee O'Brien, we have to deal with it...
Sure, but I think that's relevant.
...the approaching ten o'clock.
Okay, but it, I think it's a...
Somebody has to, somebody, I...
I think this is gotta be, question's gotta be answered.
I'm calling for a motion to extend beyond the ten o'clock period, we'll take it to a vote, and depending on the vote, we can, we can act accordingly. So can I have a motion to extend beyond ten o'clock? Marvin Duarte, seconded by Eleanor Carabella. Vote. Motion carries. So we're going beyond ten o'clock.
All right. The question again, I just, it's a governance question. A, a board voted on a position being turned down, all of a sudden it's on a revised, you know, estimate budget, I, I just wonder, I put the question out to the trustees, is that good governance?
Can I comment, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, was it that the trustees voted against the expenditure versus voting against the position? Can somebody qualify that?
As, as a new process, um, had, um, emerged in the budget, all the new initiatives were voted individually, and the, um, intent was to have, uh, as much of, uh, uh, surplus position as possible to, to improve our financial position. Um, I would say, is, so yes, it was voted individually, the intent was to end the budget where we currently are. We have in the past, as I mentioned with the empower reading program, um, m- made a decision operationally, it's important to, uh, roll it out to all of our schools, and done so within the budget that we were approved. Um, I, and I would argue this is no different.
Um, through the chair, I, I would disagree with that. I'll read and see if we resolve, the Holland Catholic School Board approved the 2018-19 budget estimates excluding the one point zero FTE job evaluation officer. So it did exclude the position. I, I just feel, I'm just my own opinion, I, anybody else, if, if the board did vote it down, why was it put in the es- revised estimate? I, I just feel that's not good governance. So I just put that question out to any other trustees.
Trustee Husham.
If I may, through you, Mr. Chair, I just have a question, uh, for Superintendent Nagori. This position, is, does this specifically deal with, um, like pay equity issues, recruitment, retention, and nurturing that, uh, that the jobs are evaluated properly, or okay problem? Sorry, O'Hair.
Thank you, and through the chair. Uh, again, there, there's two lines that are, are really, um, common here, and so the job evaluation officer, the non-union job evaluation review are in fact the same program. So, uh, the non-union job evaluation review, I think I've reviewed with trustees i- in another form in some quite detail, or, and the fact that we need to go about and have a, a non-union job evaluation system that is up to date and current, and also something that has the ability to look at market trends as well. Now, there's a whole lot of work that goes into that, right? And so that is going and looking at all the job descriptions that exist, having them updated, working with the consultant to go and make sure that this program works well. And so we need someone to help coordinate that, because we don't have permanent staff. So the ask here is to go and have a temporary person hired for the length of the program to, again, do the work that's necessary in order for it to be accomplished. So you've got a job evaluation review and market study that needs to happen, and then you've got a staff person who would be hired to help to assist with that program. But again, I, I have to say that it's a temporary position, and it's only for the life of the program. I'd also remind, um, trustees that certainly best practice is that this needs to occur every five to seven years. We are past that window, it needs to happen. Thank you.
Trust, Trustee O'Brien again.
Through the chair, I'm not questioning the value of the position, I'm questioning the process, that something was voted down by a board and all of a sudden it appears on a revised budget, that's, that's what I'm questioning. So I'm really questioning the, the governance of it.
Um, so a question for Superintendent Nagori, did, this all comes within the revised budget? It doesn't increase, as, as we've heard you say over and over. Would it resolve the matter if we actually moved a motion just to include it and, and bring it back up if it's a matter of governance? I put this question to who can ever answer it, so we can stop debating this and move on.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe there was a question addressed to me. Um, if we, uh, just to answer the first part of the question, and the second one is, is up to, to the trustees, uh, if we go to the next slide, and I know I'm, I'm stealing the thunder from, uh, uh, Aaron's, uh, slide, but if we're looking here at this line, the total accumulated surplus ending balance available for compliance, this year, at budget estimate, we were saying that with all the transfers we're going to have in, which I think is, are probably on the next slide, we're going to end at twenty-four point six million. After everything we've put in, we're actually going to end with, um, I'm just making sure it's ending on twenty-five point nine million. So we're actually in a healthier financial position than budgeted, which is why we thought that as a one-time expense, uh, will be within the budget that was approved, and, and, and we actually have a healthier position tha- than... have a healthier position than it was approved in June. And the second question is really for the table, but perhaps just quickly on the next slide, you'll see that the transfer to the operating reserve, so keep in mind with everything in, okay, that we've looked at, the transfer to operating reserve remains at eight hundred, which was approved, which was the requirement to be at eight hundred so we can build it up to two percent of our provincial allocation. The transfer to the capital reserve, now in here it says it's a negative seven fifty, but what we've had originally, and this is the net impact, what we've had originally is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars going in. It actually is a million five going in and then we have two point two five millions coming out to cover for some of the turf fields that have been identified in the staff report that Superintendent Merrick talks about today. That's why we're building the capital reserve is to use it on complementing the school renewal project. So actually, it's a one point five million going in, which is even better than a budget. And then the rest is some of the, and it's actually reflected in here, because then we're adding it to this line so we can amortize it later and bringing it to revenue. So to answer the first part of your question, we're in a stronger financial position. And I just wanted to make sure we get here before we make a decision, just because I wanted to finalize the presentation, make sure that trustees understand the impact and the budget first and then by any means bring it back to the table. Thank you.
Trustee O'Hairn?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just in response to Trustee O'Brien's statement there, the board of trustees at the time approved a budget, so you're working within that budget allocating these different positions. So is it not that the trustees had already approved it, so it's okay for you to do that as opposed to good governance question? The good governance, as the board of trustees approve that budget, you're working within it. You're not exceeding the budget, you're actually increased the surplus. I don't know what the negative ramification is to that.
Trustee O'Brien, will you allow the answer, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's what I had mentioned before, we're working within the approved budget. And the other piece is, this is an operating item that we have an allocation of a budget that we can provide and make a decision on how to best make the impact on our system. And this is one of those items that I think are very important for succession planning and to remain competitive because we are in a precarious situation if we don't keep good people and we don't make sure that we stay competitive within the market. And this budget allows for that. It's a one-time expense. It's probably the best time to do so and then it will also come back, the results of that will come back to the board in terms of, here's the result, what we'll be implementing, would it be a phased-in approach and what that decision might be? That's coming back to the board. So this is just setting the table to say, here's where you are, here's some of the gaps and have a plan put together that will come back to the trustees.
Trustee O'Brien?
Through the chair, in response to Trustee O'Hairn's question, it does say this, it says be resolved that the Hallton Catholic District School Board approved the two thousand eighteen budget excluding the one point FTE at job evaluation officer. It does say that. Are we ready to move on to the next one? To the next item? Trustee Carabella?
So Roxanne, after you, Mr. Chair. So at some point, this comes to us for a vote also, no? Or this is, this has been sent, this is?
No, we're accepting the information.
Through the chair, to the chair, to Mr. Chair, I'm wondering about the process, like I knew at this, we vote for a budget in June and then a revised budget gets submitted on December fourteenth that we do not re-vote, that we do not vote again on. And yet there's six million dollars added to that. Our job as trustees is to make sure every, is to make sure every cent spent is for the rate pair's benefit. So there's six million dollars we will not be able to vote on. I'm just wondering about the value of that, the good governance of that.
This is a budget that was voted on.
Yes, I'm talking about the additional six million.
And we are receiving the changes which are currently being explained.
They're currently being explained, but they won't be voted on. That's my issue.
Just as a point of clarification, a sizable part of that portion is allocated through staffing, so it's, when we have increased enrollment, that necessitates certain increases in staffing by regulation. So while you're not, while you're right that it's a six million dollar figure, a large figure of that is, has already been allocated for.
Hey, Trustee O'Brien, if you have a motion that you want to pass or you want to put on the table, please do so and then we can arguably vote on it.
Okay. I move that for the future, all revised budgets be approved by the board of trustees.
Eleanor Carabella, secondar? Marvin Duarte? Can we have a vote on it? There's a discussion? Trustee Bouzal?
It's all good, it's getting late. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go back to the position so that I think we're missing a piece on this and maybe Superintendent O'Hair, if you can address this. Considering we're dealing with a workforce that is predominantly female, would be not, would this not be something that would actually fall in line with our duties under pay equity when not? I kind of mentioned it before in making sure that we're evaluating jobs and being fair not only through that but through a pay equity lens?
Point of order, there's a motion on the floor for discussion is about, do we vote on all future?
I've allowed the question, Trustee O'Brien.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. I believe that this comes from your questioning through your motion.
Got it.
Again, through the chair, part of the job evaluation process is to ensure internal equity, which is how you maintain pay equity. Now, we have an obligation as an employer, Ontario, to maintain pay equity for our employees. So the entire program in terms of the review and how that review is undertaken requires that it be accurate and that it reflects and covers off the pay equity acts.
Any other questions? Trustee Charabell?
So when you suggest that you, every time there's a revised budget, you want it approved by the board of trustees, now, are you referring to every single time any change is made to any amount of cash in any account, we need to approve it? Or are you saying that every time a revised budget comes to the board, we approve it then, still giving our senior staff the freedom to make small changes where they're needed?
Through the chair, I'm talking about the revised budget that has to be submitted on December fourteenth. So that would give a lot of lenience to senior staff.
So this is a one-time thing?
No, on a continual basis, that as a rule of practice that all revised budgets we vote on. That's my motion.
Could somebody enlighten us on the current practice and procedures?
Mr. Chair, so I guess there's two aspects of that. The practice in the last few years, at the request of the board, had been to approve the revised budget. There isn't a regulated requirement in the province. There's more boards receiving as information than there is approving, but having said that, different boards have selected a different way to deal with it. The only mandatory requirement is the budget, the original budget, and as you've seen the financial statements, the financial statements get compared to the original budget. Revised budget, the purpose for that is for the ministry. They want to know, now that we have the students in the seats and we have an actual candidate on enrollment, which is the main driver of the revenue, are we still targeting to have a compliant budget? That's what they want to know because it could be a large swing for some boards. They could forecast one thing and have a decline they haven't expected. In our case, our growth, we've been conservative with the enrollment projections, our growth has surpassed our projections, so we're actually moving up every revise, but we're still maintaining a strong surplus position. But the requirement from the ministry is, because now we know what that enrollment driver is, we can better figure out what our financial position is. And if we do find ourselves into not being in a compliance budget, which a compliance budget means a deficit budget, then that's where the ministry likes to gather that information. So that's the revised budget, the purpose of the revised budget. We also provide trustees with interim reports and actually, the appendices to this report will give you the expenses to date for the three months ending November thirtieth. So every quarter, you will be receiving how we track against the budget. We always track against revised budget. And the revised budget continues to be revised through the year as more grants become available because we do not forecast for them. And that's a good thing because now we have all these education program others that have been canceled, some have been committed to, and our financial implication is, I would say, probably nil. Financial implications, I'd like to stress that, the fact that the, some programs are not going to be continuing is a different aspect and unfortunate for our system. But as they get announced, they will get added. We don't budget for those. So that, they will, the revised budget continues to evolve, but it will be for items that will be offsetting each other in terms of revenues and then the expenses associated with it.
Mr. Chair, would it be, through you, Mr. Chair, would it be an accurate statement to say that the revised budget is an administrative exercise of confirming the major decisions that were decided on in June, which is, so in other words, typically in a revised budget, would you see any major changes to the primary budget or decisions being made?
Mr. Chair, thank you for the question. I would say yes, and the reason is that when we have things that happen for the year, where we need to dig into the reserves, we require board approval. So if something does happen where we say, well, we would like to have this additional initiative, it will cost half a million dollars we haven't budgeted for and we propose to use it out of the operating reserve that has to come to the board table. The capital reserve is the same idea, Superintendent Merrick's report, it's provided a staff and then action in January. Because it's asking you permission, it has all these different capital funding sources, but a portion of those expenses are going to be covered from the capital reserve. So if we do change that financial position based on management's control, I would say, they come to the board. The other thing that changes our position is where we end up in terms of sick leave coverage and the trend, so we do our best estimate and that might impact the financial position, but not something that we can bring forward and say we're, we will in the interim reports tell you how we track against it and that we foresee that we'll be surpassing it. But it's not, that kind of item wouldn't come for your approval. It's out of, outside of our control. However, items that go for the reserves do because you've approved a financial position. You approved the budget in its entirety, not necessarily picking pieces apart. So that has been a practice that has been, that we've got too, but not necessarily the practice that I would suggest.
Could you, we have a motion on the floor? Could you repeat it and clarify for everybody's benefit, please? Do we have, we have seconded by Eleanor Carabella? Okay, all four?
Do recorded vote.
Record a vote. Trustee Amy Murphy. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Maza.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Araro.
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte. Trustee, trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee Charabell.
Opposed.
Trustee Guzal.
Opposed.
Motion fails. Thank you. On to the next one, ten point four. You're going to need to finish though.
I think we've been through the surplus, so Roxanna kind of went through that, so we'll kind of move on a little bit. The EPOs, as we've all heard this week, we've had the announcement last Friday from ministry's position on our education program other grant and the impact. Up here on our screen right now are the four programs that are directly impacted in the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget. Now, the first two we have there, the highly skilled workforce, the experiential learning for one hundred fifty seven thousand, it hasn't been necessarily removed. What has been said is that there's going to be a new transfer payment agreement, so basically an agreement between the ministry and us as to changes to the program itself. We don't know what the dollar figure is. We don't know how much is being removed from it. It just says something new is coming. Same thing for the renewed mass strategy. We have five hundred and forty thousand, almost five hundred and forty one, sorry, five hundred and forty one hundred thousand dollars going through the renewed mass strategy, of which there is a position attached to that funding. The ministry has said that there's going to be a change coming to it. We just don't know what that change is yet. So I don't know, I can't put down what the revenue reduction is because we don't know, number one, if there's going to be a revenue reduction and number two, is, what the amount of that revenue reduction is. The second two items there though, the well-being, the safe, accepting, helping schools, we do know that there is a reduction coming. What we don't know is the amount of the reduction. So I put an estimate there, I just put a fifty percent. That's just our estimate. We don't know, we have nothing to base that estimate upon. We just put a figure in there of fifty percent. The last one, the Innovation in Learning Fund, that one has been canceled. So there was a hundred and eight thousand dollars that we initially thought we were getting for eighteen nineteen. We are no longer getting that funding. Having said that, we have not spent any money on that to date. So as Roxanna mentioned earlier, the financial impact to us, other than from the system perspective of not having these programs, there is no real financial impact to us as a board.
And just on the well-being, excuse me, we haven't just arbitrarily picked fifty percent. The prior, a couple of years, the funding level was at that ninety one thousand. In eighteen nineteen, they announced that they will double that funding. So it's the first year they doubled it. So our expectation is if they're going to be reducing, potentially would be to the levels of the prior year. But again, we're speculating and that's all we've got behind that number, but we did pick that number because of prior levels.
Now, this following list of programs here, these are programs that are not continuing in two thousand eighteen nineteen, but we did have them in seventeen eighteen. And you can see the list down there, there's numerous programs that we had in seventeen eighteen that are no longer continuing in eighteen nineteen. The final item there, it says program ending in twenty twenty. This is the TLLP program. You might know it as Teacher Learning and Leadership Program. This has already been announced, it's already a funding going on and this is at the teacher level. Teachers have a program, they apply to the ministry for a grant, they receive the grant and then they spend it on some kind of leadership program, typically within the classroom, but not necessarily within the classroom. Now, this has not been canceled for this year, but it will be ending next year. So we included that on the list as well because it will impact the system. The good news is, these are programs that will be continuing. So you can see there's a healthy list of items on here that we will continue this year that we were announced before and we just don't, I don't necessarily have all the information yet. The ministry is now starting to forward the transfer payment agreements, so some of these, we don't know what the funding is allocated to our board, but we do know we are getting a funding amount. do know we are getting a funding amount. Now that concludes the presentation, so open up for any other further questions. Trustee Ware.
So through you, Mr. Chair, if we go back to page 11. Yeah, so basically, there's been a deduction in the transportation section. Why is that? If student enrollment is going up, why is transportation going down?
Very good question. A large part of that was an estimate that we had last year for transportation from Assumption to Pearson. So those actual costs came in lower, which, you're right, in a growth, you would think we'd have more transportation, which we do. There is more transportation, but it's offset by that reduction in the savings for the lower cost in savings from transferring to Assumption to, less to Pearson in the north.
On the same note, question to Superintendent Nigoy, does this decrease in transportation consider the fact that students, identified students with IEPs are now eligible for transportation? Has that been included in that?
Thank you for the question. For you, Mr. Chair, no, that motion relates to next year. So this is for the current year. This decrease is a number of things. It's an increase in transportation because of increasing enrollment to current programs, current level programs, but a decrease of 600,000 for the transportation for Assumption because at the original budget, we assumed every student being transported to Pearson will be an incremental cost. However, we're able to double and triple runs, so we have root efficiencies, and it came in instead of 700,000 to 100,000 increment in the cost. So that, the net of the two is actually an increase in transportation because of growth, but a decrease overall because of the transportation for Assumption. But no, that motion will be reflected into the 19-20 budget and will come forward during that budget process. Thank you. You will notice that my area has the longest titles of the reports and I, we're number one in that. I recognize we only have six minutes before, if there's a vote for extension, so I'll quickly go and just mention that this is an annual report trustees receive. We have a requirement for the ministry to submit a four-year ministry projection. They form the basis for our grants for student needs or the funding for next year. So this is 2019 to 2023, the four-year ministry projection was submitted to the ministry on November 20th, and it shows growth across our system of about 893 average daily enrollment. So just as a little bit of a background, enrollment is counted on two count dates, October 31st and March 31st, and we take the average of that, and we call that average daily enrollment, and that's what most of our funding, not all, is based on. So we are projecting 893 additional average daily enrollment or student growth over the current year, growing from 35,599 expected this year to 36,492. And the report also provides the trends by municipalities. If trustees would like to get some background on the demographics and trends in each municipality, our senior manager of planning services, Fred Debo, is here to provide you those details. I will leave it to you, Mr. Chair, and the trustees if we have time for that. Thank you.
Should we wait till 10:30 actually, or are we doing it right now?
Open it up for questions. But I would like to get the decision as to whether we move forward or not.
It is an information item only, so this is submitted to the ministry in terms of where we are, so it's based on our enrollment forecast. It isn't an item for, an action item. It is an information report for trustees.
Okay, we'll go with the information then. Yeah, do the break.
All right, lightning rounds, sorry. Through you, Mr. Chair, so I'll give a very brief overview of what's occurred over the last year and what we project over the long term. So on page two of the report, that's page 105 of your package, as Roxanna had mentioned, the total headcount that we see, including the Thomas Merton Centers, is 35,995 students board-wide. So we use that October number to drive a four-year enrollment projection for the Ministry of Education, and then we carry that forward over a 15-year period, which will drive the update to our long-term capital plan that will be going forward again in the same process up until June. So, that said, overall, as a board, what we've, as Roxanna and Aaron and Jay had pointed out, is overall for 2018, we've increased by about 1,438 students between last year to this year, which is a pretty exceptional year overall. Previous years, we've seen about 700s. Last year, we saw about 1,100s in terms of a total increase board-wide. So what we did now for this year, acknowledging that there has been an increase, we have taken a three-year weighted average, and we have carried that forward as an assumption for the trend that will be continuing on over the long term. So with that said, between the four-year period between 2019 to 2022, what we anticipate as an average of what will increase, at the elementary panel, we're looking at an average increase of about 603 students, elementary students board-wide year-over-year. At the secondary level, we're looking at a four-year average of about 476 secondary students year-over-year. So we're still growing quite substantially in these areas. Now again, the main driver for this growth, it would be predominantly in Milton, I would say. This is one of the last holds of the large greenfield developments, we'll get into that in a second. Otherwise, the rate of growth is maybe slowed also by more stagnant enrollment in other municipalities. So I'll do a quick profile, maybe 20 seconds apiece here. So the city of Burlington, really what you can see as a community is predominantly a mature community right now, that in some areas, you've seen some declines, but now we're seeing somewhat of a resurgence in terms of enrollment. So what we're assuming right now, will confirm this through a study that we're currently undertaking, is whether it was a great influx of move-ins over the last few years, and whether we'll anticipate that these move-ins will continue, given the current housing market has cooled quite significantly. So we're gonna really have a look at that and see what impacts will have on the future. Overall, Burlington, however, at this time has a stable enrollment both at the elementary panel, at the secondary panel, we're seeing greater retention rates, and with the inclusion of additional international students in our secondary schools, we're maximizing our utilization overall, which is always good. With regards to the town of Halton Hills, this is really a tale of two areas. You've got the, I'll call it the community of Georgetown as well as the community of Acton. Acton is a very mature area in the northwest quadrant. We have one school there, and there's a little bit of growth left, but not enough, not a lot, so that'll sustain St. Joseph over the long term. Whereas Georgetown community right now is essentially divided into two parts. You have the north, which is the more established historical community, and to the south is the more recent development that's occurred since the early, or late 80s. There is also the new development area in Vision Georgetown, which will be the main driver of growth over the next.
Can I stop you for a minute?
Yes.
We need a motion to extend the meeting. Can I have him over? Mr. O'Brien, seconder. Trustee Murphy. Lo, all in favor? Motion carries.
All right. I can recap afterwards if you want to ask any questions about your area specifically. I understand right now it's a speed round, so I'll slow it down a bit. So Halton Hills, as I mentioned, we, oh, trustee Caraballo.
Just to, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, did you, I'm sorry, you should acknowledge me. Through you, Mr. Chair, just about the Burlington numbers, it's interesting because we had the Empires three years ago, or, and enrollment was going down, and now we're stable and it's gone up in the, in that area. So I just wanted to comment on that, or, it's good, I'm glad.
Through you, Mr. Chair, for the other Burlington trustees around the table. Yes, we've seen a little bit of an uptick back after, starting in 2016. So we saw a continuous decline over 15 years, and there was a slight uptick. So we'll see how long that sustains itself and see what that does over the long term. We have been noticing a lot of move-ins, but again, there's no new development. So if there's no new move-ins, there's no regeneration, so we have to be very, we'll be monitoring that over the long term. Continuing on, so Halton Hills, just to recap, specifically with the Vision Georgetown area, that is under the current growth plan for the province and the growth allocations that have been provided to Halton Hills from the region. The Vision Georgetown area is approximately 6,500 units of residential. That is often in flux, but right now, that's the number we have. And within that area, that is the main growth that's gonna be occurring. It's holding at St. Bridget, and we have two school plans, two schools planned in that area. One is an elementary school, and the other one is a combined elementary secondary school. And that's because of, we don't have enough to sustain an entire secondary school, but we have enough to do half, so we've done a combined school instead. So again, that growth is anticipated to start from 2022 onwards, so right now, we're looking at a stable enrollment over the next three years, and the second the shovel hits the ground in Vision Georgetown, we anticipate that it may move quite rapidly. So we're hoping to get in the ground sooner rather than later on that new school because we don't have much holding space left in Georgetown specifically. Speaking to the town of Milton now, so as I mentioned previously, the town of Milton is really the big, one of the major strongholds of growth within our board, and one of the fastest-growing communities in North America. As it stands right now, the community is essentially divided amongst three different parts. I would say there's the established community, which is essentially the Our Lady of Victory and the Holy Rosary Milton Elementary School, that's Milton pre-2003. The horseshoe that surrounds it, which is the two latest, or older secondary plan, Sherwood and Bristol, that was the last growth that occurred, and that has been effectively pretty much, I'd say at 95% completely built out, and those schools are all in their peak enrollment right now, and they're starting to sit downward. And the third component of Milton, I would call it, is the greenfield new growth areas. Right now, there are a number of them that are secondary plan areas within Milton. You have the Milton Heights area, you have the Boeing Secondary Plan area, which we currently have four elementary schools designated, as well as the new secondary school along the way. And then afterwards, we have the two new secondary plans that were just recently approved, well, approved, initiated by the town of Milton. We have the Trafalgar Corridor Secondary Plan, which is essentially along the Trafalgar Corridor, and the one that will follow that is the Britannia East Secondary Plan. Altogether between these two new secondary plans, we anticipate probably another secondary school, as well as five new elementary schools. Again, that will be the main driver of growth within the town of Milton, as well as Boeing. So we're trying to keep up as fast as we can with those projects. Now for the town of Oakville, again, Oakville has a wide variety of neighborhoods. We have the south of QEW area, which is the more well-established neighborhoods. Right now, with regards to that, you're not seeing a lot of greenfield development, but you're seeing a significant amount of infill development, so we'll see whether or not these high-density developments will be having any impact on our schools in terms of enrollment, and seeing if those yields will change over time. North of that, between QEW all the way to, let's say, Upper Middle, that is the probably, Oakville progresses northbound, northward, so then that's the next one. So that's a more established neighborhoods, and there's not a lot of growth left in there aside from a few pockets. Sawett Mill was discussed earlier today. So we're having some of those golf course conversions happening, Glen Abbey is another. And those right now are helping slow the decline of some of the schools that are, have been in these more established neighborhoods.
Trustee O'Brien.
Sawett Community, do you know when it will be up and running? Do you have access to that information?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do, and that, right now, it's been approved by the OMB, say maybe less than a year ago. So right now, they're gonna be in the process of getting the shovels in the ground within the next year or two. They're not, they haven't been registered yet, so once they get registered, then they can start really building the houses afterwards. So that's probably a year out from this time. And then we have essentially what's north of Upper Middle to Dundas, which is the newer communities that are built out. There's still pockets of growth left. And then we have the North Oakville area, which we have St. Gregory right now, that's holding for the entirety of the North Oakville area. And we have an additional four elementary sites designated, as well as one secondary. The growth of that area is a lot slower than what we've seen south of Dundas in the past, and we'll see if that picks up over time and see whether or not we'll need the full five complement of elementary schools. So that's the general picture of what's happening in the region. Appendix B provides you with an overall enrollment forecast for the next 15 years for each one of your municipalities, as well as utilization. There is the distribution of population. Appendix C, that is with regards to retention rates, so what the retention is between grade eight to grade nine from all of our elementary school and going to the secondary school, as well as it provides a picture as to where we're obtaining our secondary school students at grade nine. So as you'll see in certain areas, we have a higher proportion that come from other boards in addition to our own, which is also explaining the high and rapid growth of our secondary schools. As well as Appendix D, you have a map that essentially outlines some of the major development areas that are within the Halton region. You have it divided with one map to the south, which includes Burlington and Oakville, and supplemented by a map of the north of Halton, which is Georgetown and, sorry, Halton Hills and the town of Milton. And effectively, yes, as I mentioned earlier, this is one of the preliminary steps in the update of our long-term capital plan, so this information will be reviewed again in the new year and will be adjusted accordingly with new information that we receive, and then we will post it online as an update to the long-term capital plan on our website and proceed with that over time. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your report. Moving on to item 10.5, Capital Projects Report, as at November 30, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This report represents the first interim capital expenditures report for 2018-19, and it covers the period of September 1st to November 30th. The report outlines all the capital expenditures to date, provides details on the ongoing capital projects, including St. Nicholas, Bishop Redding, St. Mark's, the Assumption addition. We are funded for these projects through capital priorities funding, which is mostly or proceeds of disposition, but the capital priority funding is the ministry's avenue to fund additions and new constructions, and it's based on a submission basis. We get an approval on certain projects that we submit and not on others, and then we receive funding to build them. And funding is received twice a year. It is based on what we submit as a financial statement, so the, in mid-November, so that funding is received then in February, based on what we've reported. And also, we have a seven-month consolidated report into the province that they are also looking at in March, and that funding is received in July. And in part, they're self-funded, as I mentioned before, for proceeds of disposition or the capital reserve, as would be reflected through Superintendent Merrick's budget, capital budget reports that come forward for your approval through the year. The Board of Trustees and the ministry both have to approve these new construction projects or additions. The report also outlines land expenditures. These are funded through education development charges, which are levies imposed on new development, collected by municipalities, and then transferred to us. And as of, we do collect these levies over a 15-year period, so the timing is different than when we spend the expense. So we purchase land when we need it, we collect over 15. The difference in that, and because we're growing so rapidly, has resulted in 80.9 million dollar deficit, which we have to finance and incur interest in it. Now, that is what, that is not part of our operating budget that we've discussed. It is funded through this education development charge, and expenses that are incurred through interest get added on and then recalculated into the levies, in the future levies, with the intent that you collect them over time. I should also mention for the education development charges that we have a one-year backlog currently at the last year's levies. The ministry has put a cap on them, and we are not able to reflect our growth and the needs in terms of the land acquisitions that we are incurring, and they are being needs in terms of the land acquisitions that we are incurring, and they are being currently reviewed, so we're hoping that some news on that will come soon. I am a part of, actually, I'm leading the provincial committee on the education development charges consultation with the ministry, and we're hopeful that with some changes, something will come forward so we can amend our bylaws and increase the levies to reflect our need and sustain our growth and reduce the deficit. At the end of the report, trustees are presented with the remaining capital debentures that have been entered into for past capital expenses for additions and new construction, because it was a different funding mechanism back then, and we were debenturing under the Ontario Financing Authority, and they are being amortized over twenty-five-year periods, so they have all different types of amortization left, and they're there for your information. And I'd be happy to, myself, Aaron, or Jay would be happy to take any questions trustees would have. Thank you.
Trustee Charlotte Law?
The situation with the EDC bylaw, will that, is that going to pose any immediate hardship or risk towards the board, or will we be able to survive the struggle until it's all sorted out?
That is an excellent question, and I think our deficit shows that we do have quite a bit of a need that it gets resolved soon. My concern is our financing power, so we're borrowing the funds to cover for that, and there will be a point where the financial institutions will be concerned to keep increasing that loan if there isn't a sustainable revenue source to cover for it. So from that perspective, yes, to, as it currently stands, I'm hoping it will be resolved and will decrease this deficit to a more manageable level. If it continues to go up, we'll get to a point where the financial institutions will may not lend us money, so we won't be able to buy sites for new schools.
Trustee Charlotte Law?
Do you have a predicted kind of timeline or date when the financial institutions would step in and prevent us from borrowing money?
I don't think I could pinpoint necessarily, but what I can tell you, where we are right now, we have a hundred and fifty-million-dollar borrowing limit, so we still have some room within it to address the next couple of years of sites. Going beyond this one hundred and fifty million, this is more of that thirty-three percent of your provincial allocation or your operating budget being what you're able to borrow. It's similar to a mortgage, if you wish. You can only borrow this percentage of your income. I think we're approaching that limit where they would not be comfortable to lend us another fifty million. But within this limit, we still have some ability to accommodate the next couple of years of growth, and I'm hopeful that we'll have a mechanism until then.
Thank you. We're moving on to item ten point six, it's St. Michael's Catholic Elementary School Sketch Plan. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the sketch plan book for the St. Michael's School Edition. So this project was approved by the province, or funded by the province, back in January 2018 for a one-room school addition, as well as a three-room childcare. The board has selected Hossack Architects as our project architect, and the project involves, so we've been a little creative with how we've used the additional space that we get for the school, so we'll be adding a new library space to the school and converting the current library to an office, which will have a resource room, a universal washroom, which is an accessible washroom and a health room in it, as the current size of the office does not afford those luxuries, and converting the current office space into a traditional classroom, and as well as adding the three-room childcare center to the school. So the drawings for that are on page one forty-seven to one, sorry, one seventy-four to one seventy-six of your package, and we're working through the approvals now and hope to start construction in the spring for a September twenty nineteen opening, of course, contingent upon ministry approvals. If you have to take any questions that trustees may have.
Any questions? Okay. Next item?
This is.
St. Peter's Catholic Elementary?
Through you, Mr. Chair, presenting the sketch plan book for the St. Peter's Edition. This is a five-room childcare center project that was approved by the ministry back in December 2017. The board has selected MC Architects as the project architect, and this project involves the construction of a five-room childcare center, which is one infant room, two toddler rooms, and two preschool rooms, as well as some minor landscaping and parking works around the new childcare center. The drawings for this are on page two twenty and two twenty-one of your package, and again, we're working through approvals. Hope this is our construction in the spring for a September 2019 opening, and again, contingent upon ministry approvals.
Any questions? Moving on. Ten point eight, Construction Report, St. Scholastica Catholic Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the November construction report for St. Scholastica. So the library there is now open, and we're moving the resources into the library, and the stage is also complete, so just a few minor divisions left on the school, and that kind of wraps up that project. About a ten-month build from start of construction till opening, and then three to four months beyond that to open the other auxiliary areas. So if you have to take any questions that trustees may have on the St. Scholastica project.
Any questions? Thank you. Ten point, ten point nine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the November construction report for the St. Mark's School Edition. So a reminder to trustees, this is a three-classroom addition, I'm sorry, a five-classroom addition, a three-room childcare center addition, as well as an early-on center addition. The building is really taking shape now. We have the brick veneer going on, mechanical systems are being completed, electrical systems being installed, as well as painting, and the roof is now complete on the new addition. So for next month, we are completing the mechanical and electrical systems there, as well as the finishing trades that are moving in. We're targeting a late-January move-in for the school portion, and then the childcare center and the early-on center are planning to move in over the March break. So if you have to take any questions that trustees may have on the St. Mark's Edition project.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Moving right along on item ten, ten-ten. We have, I believe, we have a notice of motion on the table?
We do have two notices of motion, Mr. Chair. Ten-ten is a notice of motion forwarded by trustee. Trustee Carabella. I do have the written notice of that motion. I can either read it out or add it as information. Do you want me to read it, Roxanna? Whereas the long-term capital plan voted on June fifth, 2018, stated school boundary review and French immersion program review should be conducted in 2021 to balance overall enrollment across CE-02-5. And whereas the long-term capital plan also stated school boundary review, program review, pupil accommodation review processes include many opportunities for public consultation, final decisions in these reviews are made by Board of Trustees based on board policy, be resolved that the HCDSB will delay phasing out the extended French immersion program at St. Matthews for the 2019-2020 year, and instead use the 2019-2020 year to hold collaborative community stakeholder consultations and feedback with recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year to be brought to the Board of Trustees for approval.
Thank you. We have another notice of motion on the table. Would you read it, please?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that resolution two-three-three slash one-eight regarding transportation to AP and/or IB programs that gifted students only be put on hold and sent back to the Policy Committee in consultation with finance to have this motion revised so that it is fair and equitable and allows all students the same access to transportation to AP and/or IB programs. This motion would be pending approval and sustainability through our budget.